Our Lord, let's silence our cell phones if we can. Make sure mine is silenced as well. And then, Ms. Gina, you're all ladies in the play.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call. Here.
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 Here. Do all the recognitions.
Fun stuff.
Fun stuff. Good stuff.
Okay.
Before you start, Dr. Freitas will do the certificates with Mr. Durkin. And to be respectful of our, the Illinois Department of Public Health, instead of handshakes tonight, you can do some forearms or knuckles or dance. We'll avoid the handshakes tonight.
The foot shake.
All right. Come on up, Dr. Freitas.
You look great.
For you.
And we'll do each section, and the group can stay up till, so that everybody that's here can get their picture taken together. So this first one is the 2020 Merit, National Merit Scholarship Program. An RB student has been named a finalist in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. About 1.5 million juniors in more than 22,000 high schools entered the 2020 competition by taking the 2018 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, and approximately 15,000 finalists throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Congratulations to Lindsay DeJesus.
Hey, Lindsay. Stay up there and wait for the camera to take your picture. This is a great accomplishment. You should be very proud of your accomplishment. Let's hear it one more time for Lindsay.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, metro, suburban, all-conference band, and jazz band. So all of the students that I read, please stay up here till I'm done with all the names. The following students have been awarded positions in the metro, suburban, all-conference band, or jazz band. They will participate with musicians from around our conference. Congratulations to Marlena Burrito. Come stand over here on this side of Dr. Freitas. Ryan Encher. Sophia Perry. Justin Picard. Emily Rovolio. James Sikarsky. Andrew Spinello. Raul Villarreal. Cameron Winkler.
All right, let's post her one picture after camera gets her certificate.
And one more round of applause.
Round of applause. Great job, everyone. Good job.
Congratulations. Repertory Dance Ensemble. The Repertory Dance Ensemble members auditioned student-choreographed pieces for the Illinois High School Dance Festival at RBHS, oh, that RBHS will be hosting in May. Over 40 dances were auditioned and 13 were selected. The following students had their pieces, their piece, the games, accepted into the student showcase. Congratulations to Quincy Hayes. People with all the hardware, right? The Robotics Team. The Robotics Team competed in the 2020 Illinois FTC Championship Tournament in Elgin on February 21st and 22nd, 2020. Congratulations to the following students. Joshua Nelson. You need a bigger frame, right? Bigger camera. And Kenshin Schurman.
All right, hold on a second. Now, let's take one picture. Everybody, all the parents take a picture.
There's some layers. People who are in the front, you squat down. You know how this works.
That's right. That's why they're leaders.
That's a girl. That's a girl. That's a girl, right?
All right, hold on.
There, squat down, Paul. Squat down, Adam.
All right, now, before we break up this group, do me a favor and split the group after we take the picture. All right, split the group up here. Everybody can stand up now. All right? Well, I should ask your leader. Are they okay to stand up? Spread open, split open so I can see all these. Come on. Spread out. All right, some of you stay on that side. Okay. Was there a marketing component to this project?
A marketing component?
Yes.
Uh, yes, there was a lot of, yes, marketing was definitely one of the biggest components. We run a website, we have a Facebook page, we have a Twitter page.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking this question is you have the seven decision-makers tonight, and you have their attention, and you guys did a fabulous job over the last, I think this club started, Ms. Matanidis, when you were principal. Was this two years ago when Mr. Chadel started this?
The third year.
Third year.
And Avery, Avery and her parents were instrumental in getting this.
Yes, and they volunteered. All right, so the reason I'm asking you this question is I was here one night, late, with my son, just checking on a few things, and I heard all this scurrying going on in the classroom, and I walked in, and there were 15, 20 kids. They were building things, they were working on the remote control, they're figuring out how we were gonna get the robot to pick up something and drop something in a place. It was phenomenal.
Thank you.
And I want to congratulate you, and also, what I would've did, what I should've suggested you do is brought that robot tonight, because I think the board needs to see just how great, if you could've saw what these students put together, defines what we're doing here. We talk about money, we talk about police radios, and all this other nonsense. What the Robotics Team did was phenomenal.
Thank you so much.
And we need to, this is an activity that we need to support. We need to find a way to get them the resources. There's a good chance, some of us are either gonna be using, or driving, or doing something that these kids create somewhere down the line.
That's the goal.
So I will continue to push this with the board, and you guys keep doing great things, and we'll continue to expand our robotics club, okay?
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your support. We really appreciate it.
All right. Is there a chance they have a seat now?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Is that the only one you were?
Good job, everybody.
Okay, and our last group this evening is the Chess Team. The Chess Team competed in the IHSA Chess Tournament in Peoria in February. The team finished in 106th place. Congratulations to the following students. Julian Duda. And Eric Albar Baron.
All right, let's get in for a picture. Sure, Mr. Monti.
Oh, you're gonna give them their medals here?
Well, this is something special. So first of all, we lost everybody from last year's team, pretty much, and so usually we just reload and kick butt. And so we have seven brand-new players, and because of another event, we had to shift everybody up three or four boards, so they were playing people much harder than they should've been playing. And Charlie Bu was playing up two boards, so he should've been the fourth board, but he's playing second board. He went six and one at State, which earned him a silver medal, and they just sent it to me Friday, so this is.
Let's hear it one more time for the whole Chess Team. Hey, everybody, smile. One last picture, so the mom over there can get her picture. And we got a mom back there that needs a picture.
Got it.
All right.
And now's the time, if you wanna, oh, wait, there's the essay presentation, but parents,
we're close to where you can sneak out here real soon, before we get into fun stuff, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chess Team.
Congratulations.
That's where it starts.
Get my sleeve leaned away.
That's good.
I was sitting over here, apparently.
All right, business statements? Would anyone like to make a statement? All right. Then we have the Student Association Report.
Student Association here tonight?
No.
Parents, now's the time to run, if you wanna run. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Robotics Team, I stole you pizza. Remember that? I promised that, and I sold you a real pizza for you.
Thank you. I'm very happy to bring you our robot anytime you guys need it.
Yeah, but the playing field doesn't fit in here. We'd have to.
We can just bring the robot.
Follow up with me on the pizza thing, because I told you that night when you were finishing up that I would buy from teams.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good day. Good job, guys.
Good work. That's exciting.
All right, so no Student Association.
No Student Association. President's report, and not have a report. Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report. I'll come back to the coronavirus update. Student Advisory Board, we had six applicants that completed and submitted a full application. The next steps will include, I'll meet with the six applicants this week, I'll give them a little bit of time, and then we're gonna do a Google survey to the student body, for the student body to select four finalists from the six applicants, and then we'll have an interview committee from the board. I'll be Dr. Freitas, myself, maybe another administrator, and then one or two board members to interview the four finalists, and select a student advisory member for next year's school board.
Do we anticipate them starting in the spring, or the summer, or wait till the school year starts?
The August board meeting is when we'll start.
August board, okay.
So we'll try to, we'll make sure that we approve them either at the May or the May, May Business or May Count meeting. Curriculum advisory, no update. Facilities advisory. We're preparing for summer work. Kristin obviously has the bid tonight for the small HVAC unit that needs to go over the auxiliary gymnastics room. We already approved the roof. We have a pre-construction meeting set up for later this month, so we'll keep the board abreast of what's going on with the facilities for this summer over the next few meetings. Finance Advisory Council, we met March 2nd. We reviewed both the four-year projections for finances, as well as the staffing summary that will be presented tonight. Personnel Advisory Council, no update. Policy Advisory Council, no update at this time. Purchase or lease of land Advisory Council, we met on February 27th. We're trying to schedule now another meeting in April to discuss changes to the drawings and plans that were discussed at the meeting in February. In regards to COVID-19 or the coronavirus, we sent out a letter that's very similar to what a lot of feeder schools have sent out, and basically, a lot of the schools across the state. We're getting regular updates from the Illinois Department of Public Health, as well as the Illinois State Board of Education, so a lot of that is pre-formatted from their advice and what they're recommending. We are working with legal counsel on a few things. We have a meeting this Friday with the four, with the three feeder superintendents, myself, Matt Buckley from the Village of Riverside, just to kind of discuss a communication and a plan in the event that we do have any cases. We are working with, as I stated earlier, we're working with the attorneys. I'm meeting with the staff tomorrow, but we're working with the attorneys. They have a couple other school districts that they've worked with, where they're doing a self-reporting document, where they're asking any parents who are planning on traveling out of the country for spring break, or sometime prior to the end of the school year, to self-report that to the districts who are aware of that. And this way, as we're following, we'll have that list of countries people are visiting in the event that those jump to Level 2 or Level 3 on the CDC's travel notifications that are going out. And in the event we have to ask somebody to self-quarantine, we'll have that list of people who are planning on traveling, or are coming back to the country. So all that's in the developmental stages. We've worked on some of that earlier this week, and we're hoping to have that out to parents and finalized by the end of this week. And like I said, I have a staff meeting tomorrow, so I will be talking with the staff about those plans as well. As also, I sent an email today with an invitation to the staff in tomorrow's staff meeting, but just reminded staff members that they need to plan accordingly as they're doing their daily lesson plans and weekly lesson plans. They should keep in the back of their mind that in the event that we do get a confirmed case, we could be asked to shut down or have to shut down for several days on short notice, and we would then go to our e-learning plan, and that's what the state's working with a lot of districts on that don't have an e-learning plan. So we would go to an e-learning plan. So I just sent a reminder to staff, and I'll remind them again tomorrow, that as you're preparing your curriculum or your content for the next seven or 10 days before spring break, we should be prepared in the event that we do have to go to an e-learning schedule, should we have any confirmed cases, or should some things progress.
So we're asking them to do a 10-day or 14-day plan?
The teachers?
Yeah.
Oh, the only reason I'm saying 10 days is we have like three days left this week and a week, five days next week. So that's the only reason, not that it tied to any specific, then we're off for spring break.
Right.
So I just want them to be prepared to, when we get to spring break, that if in the event we had a shift to e-learning days, they could.
Right. And they should prepare for that. Should be prepared.
Are we considering, yeah, I got an email from Southwest, and Southwest just wanted to assure its flyers that they do clean the plane, they spend, you know, a lot of time cleaning the planes, and that they have been using a hospital-grade in the lavatories, but they brought that out, and it was error. Would we want to consider during spring break, maybe doing a little extra cleaning or something like that?
So Kristin and I have been meeting with Joel. We meet with Joel every Tuesday, but we are using already a hospital-grade sanitizer on lavatories, high-traffic areas. We're doing additional wipe downs. We're installing a few extra hand sanitizers in high-traffic areas, where there are already our hand sanitizers, but we're putting a few other ones through calf, athletic areas. And so, and Joel is keeping us up to breast with what his Airmarks, because they're a nationwide company, they're in other countries as well, so they have a full-blown plan on, they clean hospitals, they're doing a lot, so they're, we have a plan in place with Airmark in the event, if we had any confirmed cases, things we would do, things we can do over spring break. So we'll, we'll touch base with them again. That's a great idea, if there's any additional cleaning or different things that need to be done, spring break would be an ideal time. The building is still used, it's not like the building's closed during spring break because of all of our spring sports.
Classes.
But classrooms, sure.
But maybe we could also put on the website, just, you mentioned that you're already using a hospital-grade, and you've started to do a little extra cleaning. Maybe we could put like a little.
Yeah, that's in the letter that's going out to families about the self-reporting that we prepared for this week.
Because that way they know you're proactive and that you're doing it.
And Hector, I'm 99% sure in that letter that we created with Dave today, but if not, we should add that.
Okay. Just make a note for me. Your teachers are self-reporting as well?
Yes, it will be to staff. I'm gonna inform them of that tomorrow, but yes, the teachers, we're putting some expectations in place for staff and students.
Do we have, you know, I just happened to run in somebody over the weekend who was a professor, and his university has a travel ban. For our staff, might we consider?
That's why we're working closely with our attorneys.
Okay.
I don't think we can do a travel ban at this point. We can't, you could, even though CDC has only recommended people that were in Level 2 countries, it's a recommended self-quarantine, it's not even a required quarantine, only Level 3 is required, so I don't think we're at a point where we can do a travel ban or implement anything like that at this point.
But possibly make a suggestion that let us know if you're going to these places?
Yes, that goes back to what I stated about the self-reporting, right?
That's the plate, didn't it?
Correct. So we are working on it, we are being proactive, there'll be another communication coming out from Dr. Freitas this week. I'm telling, we get multiple emails a day from the state, from Illinois Department of Public Health, so we, you know, for a single school district, we're on top of this as much as we can be. We're just following the lead of the other organizations that are right now, the IDPH and the CDC.
The governor's giving daily press conferences now. If you want to tune into that too, to see where things are at.
That's all I have. President Smithing.
All right. So, okay, we'll go to the principals' report.
Good evening, honorable board members. This is how RB is winning the week, every week. Summer School brochure, all athletic and academic summer school courses will be posted online starting April 1st. Similar to last year, registration for all summer program will be done exclusively online. Summer School Session 1 will start June 1st, and will run through June 24th, Monday to Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Several credit recovery courses will be offered, as well as numerous academic workshops, including Terrifaz, RBTV, a college application seminar, the summer internship program, Bridge to RB for incoming freshmen, Bridge to AP Science, Bridge to honors precalculus, Bridge to US History. In addition to those workshops, the music department will host their annual summer marching camp and registration, and new this year, we're offering a mindfulness workshop for all students, June 1st through the 5th. Again, all information will be posted on our website for summer school, starting April Last week, the varsity boys' basketball team defeated Glen Barstow to captain a regional championship. The team is currently playing tonight against Chicago-Bogan High School, and hits the South in the sectional semifinal. Good luck, boys. What is more, a cohort of students are preparing every Saturday throughout the month of March for the SAT in April. I would like to thank all of the teachers that are committed to our students by teaching a sixth day. Mr. Dybys, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Casson, Mr. Geltner, Ms. Jarrow, Ms. Olsen, and Ms. Minow. What is more, three RB students won the Americanism Essay Contest sponsored by the American Legion Auxiliary Robert E. Colter Jr., Unit 1941. Congratulations to Cassandra, Emma, and Kenna. The Spring Musical Big Fish was a tremendous success. For those that witnessed the performance, I'm sure you cried at times, you laughed, and reflect on your contribution to your community. Congratulations to the Music and Theater Department. The concert crowd with housing was fantastic. It happened last week. I can't wait to have those eighth graders here at RB performing for us, wearing the royal blue and white. Last week also, RB welcomed the National Alliance for Mental Illness, NAMI. They presented to several families on how to have difficult conversations related to suicide and mental health. I would like to thank Ms. Winbush, Ms. Hayes, Ms. Collins, Mr. Zillinger, and Ms. Augustine, and the Student Services Department. This is a census year, Census 2020. Beginning in mid-March, people will receive a notice in the mail to complete their 2020 census. Once you receive it, you can respond online. In May, the US Census Bureau will begin following up in person with households that haven't responded to the census. For more information, please visit our website and click on the Census 2020 for more information. The Next Coffee with the Principal will be held on Thursday, March 12th, at 9:00 a.m. The RBEF Telethon fundraiser will be held on Saturday, this Saturday, March 14th, from 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. The program may be viewed live on rbtv.tv. For those that want to support, dial in, and you're welcome to give a monetary donation. There will also be live performances, so tune in. I will be dancing salsa with my wife at approximately 3:30, for those that wish to see my wife and I do a little dancing. Again, this Saturday, March 14th, at approximately 3:30. The Illinois Science Assessment will start on Tuesday, March 17, and run through Thursday, March 19. This exam is only for juniors and will take place during student science classes. The solo, the solo and ensemble recital will take place on Monday, March 16th, starting at 7:00 p.m. in the Little Theater. Also, the NHS Induction Ceremony is on Wednesday, March 15th, at 8:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And lastly, spring break begins on Monday, March 23rd, and runs through Friday, March 27. Enjoy your staycation, vacation, and your leisure time. That is my principals' report.
Thank you, Hector. Ms. Lindquist is here tonight to do a staffing summary, and I'd like to have her present under the principals' report, and then the board can vote on, just take the formal action later in the meeting, but just so that she doesn't have to stay for the whole meeting. Is that okay with the rest of the board?
Yep.
Kylie, you wanna come?
Here she comes again.
In and out. We gotta get this lady out now.
You're out of timer.
You stay as long as you like.
Ms. Nardi, what was the page number, Ms. Nardi, for the staffing summary? I have it as, 1, 227. The bills I have is, on this agenda you gave me this afternoon, I have, so 227.
227.
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
It's a light packet tonight. It's a light packet tonight.
Only 387 pages. Guys got a break. Okay, so I will go ahead and start, so I will start, it looks like, with the sectioning data that Beth provided.
Well, just real quick in your, in your, your summary memo?
Yes. So the document that I provided is the, the staffing summary overview. It's probably the next one, Mary Ann. There it is. So this is the document that is the summary of the last month or so of Beth and I working through staffing and sectioning with the instructional coaches. One of the questions that was submitted from the Board of Education on this was a question to remind everyone about our enrollment projections. So I pulled the November 12th staffing projection worksheet that Kristen submitted to the Board of Education and our current enrollment in the building is 1634. That includes all of our students, including our students in transition and outplacement programs. So our current, like, students sitting in classrooms in the building is 1611. And that is over the projection that we had for this year, which was 1709, that Scott Berannick made when he was still here in the business manager role. So we're, what that says based on the staffing projection worksheet is that we were overstaffed this year, according to the calculations used for staffing projections, by 75 to 100 students. Actually, it would be 198 students, which is why Beth and I were tasked with seeking a 1.0 to be reduced from the overall FTE of the building. Just for information's sake, the projected enrollment for students sitting in classes for next year is 1620. So on the document, it showed a projection of 1683, but we're actually looking at 1620 students in seats for next year, which is how we landed on looking to trim our FTE from 106.4 to 105.4. This staffing summary, as you can see it, lays that out for you. The very, if I'm looking at the left, the very first column gives you an idea of staffing this current school year, the 1920 school year. The middle column is what is projected for next year based on the sectioning that we have done with the instructional coaches. The change shows you where we made those cuts to FTE. So if you take a look all the way down, the top is the department average for where we made cuts. So you're looking at English, math, science, and social science. And then the required FTE, so those are things that are, that are kind of untouched typically. So there aren't many areas where we've cut there, there are a few. So for example, like adaptive PE, we always have to run for our students who have physical limitations. So that's something that always goes in. Our academic interventionist, that goes in as the person who is grading our Apex courses. Our instructional coaches are there. Where you're going to see some increases are in the social work and the counseling area. In order to make all of this kind of jive with trying to take out that, that 1.0, we've reduced our instructional technology release periods. We have taken back the dean's office, assistant dean, because we will be hiring a new full-time dean to replace Dean Sibley when he retires at the end of the year. And we cut our algebra academic support, which is, those are the teachers that are dispatched, dispatched to academic support courses to help students come up to benchmark in algebra. This current year, I think we had 88 students needing algebra academic support and we're dropped to about 57 for next school year, so that's where that number came from.
How would we know, because I, that dean's office, when I saw you go down to zero, and according to student handbook, the dean's office handles the student attendance, how would we know that you're actually having a full FTE?
Well, it's not really an FTE that deans are administrative.
Because, oh, so we don't count that into?
Correct. We had a, we had a .2 a few years ago. Neil Degety started as a .2 as like a released period or on a stipend, then Lori Sullivan. And we took it away for a year, then we added it back to kind of have someone shadow Dean Sibley in his last year to see if that we had an internal candidate. So we would pull that back next year.
Okay, so their position doesn't?
That's administrative. That's not an act.
Okay.
So then you can see too, the unassigned FTE portion, the .2 that we had this year versus next year, we have a zero unassigned FTE. So we have built in our room for transfer students within that 105.4 for next year. Beth is excellent at knowing where transfer students go. She's been doing this a long time. So we have sort of padded those areas that are high-incidence areas for students to transition in. When students transition, transition in, we need a PE for them. We typically need some elective space for them. So we build in spaces like in our drawing and painting courses. We typically see students potentially, if they transfer in, needing interventions. So we make sure that we have enough room for students to go into so that we can stand at that 105.4 and Beth can feel confident that she's going to have room for her transfer students to go in there.
What was the projection in November? I think you put in your memo.
Projection in?
105.1?
The projection in November, oh, that you prepared the board for, was 105.2. And so we're up a little bit from that 105.2 because we added some in counseling and social work.
Okay.
The other thing that we added on this document, we had a couple of board members ask for this, that hasn't been here in the past, for those of you that have seen this before, is on the right-hand side where all those class averages spit out, we put at the bottom the overall class average of intervention courses so that you have an idea, not only of what those courses are, but where we're staffing those courses in terms of the number of students that are in those courses. We run intervention courses considerably lower because those are our students that are most struggling population, students in pre-algebra or in reading, our students who have significant deficit when they come into the building in both reading and math skills. So we, we lower those class sizes to be able to support those students within the intervention. So questions on this particular sheet before I go to the courses under cap and the ones for board approval?
And we went through all those courses with the Finance Advisory Council, especially the core areas, to make sure no courses were being scheduled over what the proposed caps, correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
I just have a question on the Calc BC. That's it. I remember there was a time when we had six students and we were running it low and just grateful.
That's on the sheet. If we're good on there, I can move to that sheet.
So, no, I, the, there's extra allotments above what we had this year and those are for social work and an additional counselor in that department.
So when we did the staffing with Kylie and Beth, well, the board had already discussed about, we're at 2.6 social workers, adding a .4 social work to support the mental health with our students. We also added a .4 counselors because we're going to be doing more after the workshop, more career and vocational from the counseling side. So each counselor's caseload will be slightly lower, but at the same time, they'll be picking up some career responsibilities.
To track those, the indicators that ISB has put out with regard to what considers a student college and career-ready with the volunteer service hours, so Student Services is going to take over in that, in the first year, tracking some of that. Because at this point, there's not a lot of understanding, even, I don't think at the state level, of how are we going to track that, so?
Another unfunded, unfunded mandate by the state.
So, you know, Beth and, and Dr. Skinkis and I talked through why it would be a good idea to have that sort of live in the Student Services Department, at least for the first year until we get a real handle on how that's going to work.
Good, so their caseloads are going to go down a little bit?
Their caseloads are going to go down, yes, yes. So in addition to those two areas, that change column, anywhere you see a positive number, those are places that we have increased, obviously. And then the places where we have decreased, you see the negative numbers. If we're good on that, I will go to, this is the document that Beth prepares every year for the Board of Education, and I'm going to try to answer the questions as I weave through it, but feel free to stop me. That top chunk, that top chart, those are classes that are under 20 and we are putting those up for board approval to allow us to run those classes under 20. There was a question submitted about whether any of these courses could be offered on a rotational, like an every-other-year-type basis, to be able to give students the opportunity to take them, but maybe not run them every year. The only course in this list that could be done that way would be AP Music Theory, and that's our intention to do with AP Music Theory. You know, we've had students that have come through and not been able to take that course in all four of their years. So what we're trying to do now is put that on, it could even, in theory, be a three, every three, third-year rotation. AP Music Theory is not a capstone course. There aren't courses that build up, build up, build up, build up to AP Music Theory like there are that build up to AP Calc BC. So AP Music Theory does not have to be taken in a student's senior year or as a student's capstone to their music program. These are typically students that know that they want to be music majors and even in very robust programs in very large schools, that number is usually very small because it's a very specialized course for a specialized population. Pre-algebra is something we're going to run every single year because those are our students that are struggling. The same with these AP courses, right? AP Chemistry, honors and AP French. You know, with the languages, we are seeing a decrease in the numbers of our students who are taking Spanish and German. This year, going into next year, the German numbers are actually up a little higher than the French numbers are. We have the majority of our population taking Spanish. And there was a question about like the differential between AP French and German versus AP Spanish Literature and Language. Spanish AP has two options. AP Language is the first option. The capstone in AP Spanish or in Spanish is AP Literature. When I talked to Juan Tenoco, he helped me to understand that an AP Language course is like a 100 to 200-level course at a college. The AP Literature course is like a 400-level course in a college. One is, has the appropriate educational background to be able to teach AP Spanish Literature potentially as dual-credit. Those are our students that hit our AP Literature in Spanish. Those are students who typically came in as heritage speakers. And so we're talking about our population of students that are heritage students, coming in and having, maybe being fluent in the Spanish language, but never having been educated formally in that language. Because of their progression, starting in heritage speakers, they are able to hit that AP Literature. That is why that number is so low, because we don't have the huge population of heritage speakers that stay all the way through literature. There was also a question about whether or not any of those sort of AP offerings could be offered, like distance learning or like a online learning, and have them offered at a college. That's just not what college board, that's not how college board works. That's not how AP courses work. The trick for me is always, you know, with some of these AP numbers, yes, they are a little bit lower in some cases, but we, you know, we have in the past historically had a commitment to give students the AP experience. It's very hard for me not to bring you a course in the AP level because we are, if we're saying that we're not going to run that, then we're denying those students the opportunity to challenge themselves at what is potentially a college experience, level experience. So while AP Chemistry is only at 17, I feel like it's, you know, as a, as a strong academic institution, it is something that we should continue to run because we do have a commitment to giving our students those AP offerings. But that's why some of them at the top end can fluctuate and be a little less some years and a little more in other years.
So in German 2, we're at 19.
Yes.
And German 3, honors German 3 and AP German, that's a combined class?
Correct.
So it's year 3 and year 4?
Yes.
So there's potential that we're going to need to start, could possibly have to start offering German online should that become, those numbers continue to drop?
Potentially, because our current German teacher is, I believe, in the retirement track. So that may be something that to finish out their programming, we may need to, to look at some online options. But I think we're also, if I'm being honest, as a school district, we, we have to make a decision, you know, Patricia Reeves is a phenomenal German teacher and she has built a really good program, an amazing program. As the numbers in different languages start to kind of level off and drop, we're going to have to decide, do we want to continue that German program and replace Patricia? She certainly has some ideas about how we would do that and she has a wide network of people that she could connect us to. Or, you know, there are schools that have gone to other language options. That's going to be a decision that we kind of have to make probably sooner rather than later as we're transitioning, you know, as Patricia leaves us.
So I'm looking in kind of the same vein, on the next table, you've got German 1 and French 3, both at 20 and 26 respectively. So how does all that tie with the .4 increase in world language? Are those all Spanish-language focused?
Yes. And one of the increase, part of the increase in Spanish is that .2 assistant dean's position was a Spanish teacher. So going back into the classroom, now she needs that .2 back in her Spanish class. So then?
Kylie, a question on this.
Sure.
Are there individuals who are qualified to teach multiple languages?
In our building currently, there is no one to my knowledge.
But if we were to replace?
I'm not positive about Lawrence.
Ms. Reeves, possibly somebody who spoke German and another.
And Patricia, that is something that Patricia has talked to me about, finding someone. And she said that very often with students who go to pursue education in German, she says very often they get a dual certification because there's an understanding that there aren't as many people taking German. So a school might have a few German classes and maybe that, that person needs to teach something else. So she's very confident that there are qualified people that would have a dual certification. We wouldn't know until we, you know, posted and vetted for that. But yes, absolutely. The middle section are those classes that are over 20 but under the cap. So Beth lists the class cap on the right-hand side and in the March enrollment, that's where she's, we're seeing the averages land there. These are some of the places where we have built in room for transfers. So students have the ability then, when they come to RB, to take as an elective film studies or creative writing, because we've had some room in there and they can start to get some of those elective credits. Typically, the marker for courses to be viable essentially is that 20 mark. So when we see courses that are hitting the 20 and above, we are looking to bring those forward for student opportunities. The, the marching band, the jazz ensemble, those particular numbers often fluctuate and you will often see them on this sheet. Aubrey Prince is, is known for telling Beth Augustine to raise her class cap size as much as she can because she wants all the kids in the choir. She wants as many kids as she can get in there. For example, though, like the orchestra numbers, you're going to see one on the under cap and one on the over. Beth went to our orchestra teacher and said, you know, how do you want to split this? Do you want to make these two courses more even? So one isn't over and one isn't under. And he said, you know, with the honors level, it's really important to keep those kids together. I'm fine with, you know, the over part, it's just kind of the nature of the B. So some of those decisions in terms of what's over and what's under, we make with teachers as well because it impacts their programs. If we're taking kids out of the orchestra and not allowing them to get in, then that is impacting something beyond just the classroom. There was a question in that middle section about Global Area B. Global Area Studies B is the sort of counterpart to Global Area Studies A, which fulfills a cultural and applied studies requirement for us. It's one of the options that, that fulfills that option. Global Area A is the Middle East, Africa, and South America. Global Area Studies B is the study of Asia. So students, they just, typically Global A is higher enrollment and we usually offer fewer sections of Global Area Studies B. But that is feeding into, like I said, that cultural and applied studies requirement. And then there was one question in the courses that are over caps about honors sports med in terms of the difference between that and regular sports med. There isn't a regular sports med. When that course was written, which predates me, it was written as an honors course because of its content and the scope of the course and what you have to learn. So it was just always listed as an honors course. So that's just simply the qualifier to let students know that they have that honors distinction.
The Calc BC is high, that's fantastic. Is instructor okay with that being over the cap?
Yeah, so we, Calc BC is one of those ones where we typically have one section, right? Because that's a really advanced level of math. And when we went through that with the instructional coach, they can sort of tell. And when we went through that with the instructional coach, they can sort of tell coming up, like who's going to filter into those classes. And, I mean, the kids that are in Calc BC could probably run the world if we let them because they're that smart. So they're comfortable with that being, they don't want to exclude anyone and they recognize that we wouldn't break that into two sections. So they're comfortable with that.
So are we okay with AP European History being 36 students?
So this was tricky. Because when we initially look at that, we would say that would need two sections, but we're cutting out 1.0 FTE. So running two sections of AP European History at a very, you know, at a very low number, 18 each, that is not something that we had the luxury of doing. So what we're doing with AP History is oftentimes when there's a singleton, in AP US History only having one section is a singleton. Once you get it on the board, students conflict out sort of naturally. Because if I want to take that as a singleton and I want to take calc, these wouldn't be the classes you would take together, which is for kind of analogy purposes. If I want to take calc and I want to take Euro and I want to take Madrigals, those are all three things that are one period. If any of those are offered at the same time, now I have to make a decision. Because I'm one person, I can only go to one place. Also with those students that are in AP Euro, AP Euro is a tough course. And I feel like some students' families may be, you know, it's, it's a sophomore level and I don't know that people realize necessarily how tough that is. So there's some transcript review that has to happen to make sure that all of the kids that want that course have the academic sort of ability to go into it and be very successful. So that we ensure that we're not setting kids up for failure. So there's some conflict out and some transcript review that will happen there. That course will not run at 36. There will not be 36 kids in that room. They won't all get in. So that's kind of how that ends up washing out. And that's another one that's kind of on the fence.
We couldn't run the AP History at 18, but we'll run the AP Chemistry at 17, the AP Spanish at 17, right?
Yeah.
So I'm a little confused why we wouldn't run the AP History at 17.
Well, the 20 and the 17 and the, the 17 and the, the ones you're asking about are on, they're less than 20. They don't even have 20 kids signed up. So there's a chance some kids can conflict out of that as well.
Right, so they could go from 17 to 15.
Or 12.
Or 12. So in theory, you would end up with like 12 kids in class.
Right, so we ask...
Where do I sign up?
We ask for board approval on that. So before we split the section, we see who conflicts out. If they come to me in, in June and say, no one's conflicted out, we may need to add an extra section. And so we, then I just come to the board.
36.
Yeah, then I just come to, we had that a few years ago with the bio.
And then, you know...
I think that becomes an FTE issue then.
What do you mean FTE issue?
If we come and say we need another section.
Because we don't have that built in .2.
It is not built in, no.
That would be a .2, right?
Mm-hmm. Another section, yeah. A year-long course is a .2.
Right, we would just come to you and say, instead of 105.4, we need to go to 105.6.
And kind of the rationale behind that to your question, the AP Music Theory we're putting up there because we've tried to run it for five years and we haven't been able to. So that's one that we really are committed to figuring out. How do we get a rotation in place, right? AP Chemistry is a course that fits into the progression of a science, right? So you naturally move through a science progression. And if a student doesn't take AP Chemistry when they should be taking it in their progression, there's not like another opportunity for them to take it. Now, if a kid didn't get into AP Euro, there potentially could be a way for them to take AP Euro again in another year. So that's kind of how, you know, when we're looking at cutting FTE, those are kind of the decisions that we have to grapple with to decide what we're going to bring the board. Again, with AP Spanish Literature, that's a class that we're always going to be bringing you. We're always going to be requesting, that's not going to get to 20, very unlikely that it gets to 20 because of those heritage numbers. And, you know, when we're, that's kind of the, you know, that's kind of the catch-22 that we have to decide on.
Kylie.
Yes.
Just so we, we kind of clarify, because I know you're, you're saying about the cutting, but we went through, when we went through the staffing with the board...
Yes, we were, the projection showed that we were overstaffed.
So the two board members in every room, what I'm saying, every, we went through every staffing sheet two weeks ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's room in every class.
Yes.
There's none that are running up. I mean, that's why we're showing you out of the, however many classes we offer here, the several hundred classes we offer, these are, and then run up against the...
The tab.
Yeah. So, I mean, that just shows that there were room in all those classes when Deanna and Wes went through there and saw that there were five or six seats in every one of those classes.
And with conflicts, the only classes that, you know, really would run that highly, for example Clarion at 36. That was, you know, a teacher decision to want one section of Clarion instead of two. Those, he is working with Beth to figure out how to make that work so that all of those students won't be in the classroom. We are not talking about...
But that also, I'm sorry, that also became more stringent, if I remember correctly.
With the curriculum changes?
Yes.
Yes, correct, it did.
So some kids might get wind of that and still not be in it.
Right. One student I remember, I think this year, when Mark started teaching Clarion, a student said, you have to write for the newspaper? I want to drop. It was like, I'm out of here. So, yes, those types of things happen. There will not be a class of business principles and accounting with 38 students physically sitting in that classroom. That will not happen. They won't all get in there. That's, this is just kind of a summary of where we are at this point.
And so the board understands why we're approving this tonight. It's because under school code, we have to give any notification to any teachers. If, if the board says, hey, we don't want to approve these classes under 20 to align with board policy. And so then we have to, if we have to make any staffing reductions or reductions in force, that all has to happen 45 school days before the end of the school year. So that's why we do this in March. So it's always easier to add back if there's a conflict or there's overcrowding. We can always add back, but you cannot take away. So there's been some discussion, well, why do you project out in November? Why do we do staffing? Because to fit into the guidelines that the state offers in regards to reduction in force and some of those things, you need to know those decisions now.
Yeah, that's the law. That Illinois school...
Then we could, if there's like Kylie saying, okay, if she comes to us in, in June or July and says, hey, none of these kids are conflicted out, none of them are dropping, we should probably add this extra .2. You have to, you can always add, but you can't subtract. So that's why you have to do it under this timeline.
So I have one last question. And I don't need to know the detail, I'm just curious about if we have this existing. If I hear correctly, you're saying that we do have teachers in-house that have the appropriate credentials that could be moved around? Maybe they're doing a study hall and they have the credentials to pick up .2 of something? Or if we need to make some adjustments, we have enough people in-house to do that?
So we, yes. And so one of the things we changed this year was a past practice that they, we handled ours part-time requests differently. So that if over the summer, there are changes and we need to add back, we notified those people that submitted part-time requests, like you're asking to be a .6. There is no contract language that requires part-time assignment. It's a courtesy of the board and it's that's the staff to at least request it. So we, we sent letters this year by saying, okay, we have a .6 for you or we have a .4 for you, or we, or we don't have a .6, it's a .8, but it's still part-time. If you want it, you could have that, or you need to be full-time. But the language we worked with during, Hector and I worked on with the president and President Pro temp, was we put language in their letters that made it clear that this is a tentative assignment. In the event additional sections needed to be added over the summer, they could be added. So that we don't get in a pickle like we have in the past.
So that way you can grow and shift a little bit? You have the ability to do that?
Correct.
So question, maybe more of a comment. I mean, the only wellness class we see on here is group fitness at 46. Is it unusual not to see anything else below the...
So Leaders Training is actually a wellness class also, and so is Dance 2.
Okay, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
But there are more wellness classes, correct?
Oh, yeah. These are just the ones that are over the cap.
Right, right.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a lot of wellness classes.
Just matching this up with where we're looking at changes in terms of staffing and there's no changes in the wellness area. So that's a, just a note.
Yeah.
That's it?
Sounds like it.
For questions?
Well, I guess the pink elephant in the broom is, we're going to be okay with our science, our lab classes. We're making sure that we have appropriate...
Yes.
You know, stations, every seat and a chair has a station.
Yes, yes. Yep.
Thanks Kylie.
Thank you Kylie, thanks for staying.
No problem.
Okay, we go back to the Assistant Soup Report.
Assistant Superintendent Report.
Kristen, what page are you on?
I'm on page 11. So tonight I will provide the Board of Education with financial information for February 2020, which represents roughly 66% of the fiscal year. As always, I start with the monthly summary report. And the total revenue for the month was $2,798,065, with 89% coming from property taxes and 7% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding. Total expenditures for the month were just over $2 million, with 76% going towards salary and benefits, 11% towards operation and maintenance cost, and 5% towards special education tuition. On the next page, we give the monthly financial statements. And you can see year-to-date in the operating fund, the district has received $15,232,641 and expended $18,271,250. So currently, we have deficit spent $3 million. Certainly, this deficit will decrease significantly when the district receives a second installment of property tax in the spring. But again, that's why it's so important that we have a fund balance that we can draw upon until we receive that second installment.
So we continue to pay our bills, but we're not taking in this money, the money yet?
Correct.
Yet.
Correct.
And the state is still behind on its payments?
The state's been keeping up right now with evidence-based funding. There is, there is concern whether or not that will continue in the future. But certainly, right now, the state continues to make payments for evidence-based funding. Next page is the summary of revenues, which shows that the district has received 57% of our revenue in the operating funds. This is slightly behind last fiscal year at this time, which was 60%. Again, we'll know more once we get our spring installment of property tax. It'll be a much better comparison. Now, the summary of expenditures shows the district has spent 68% of the budgeted expenditures for this year in the operating accounts. And that's very similar to where we were tracking at this time last year, which was 67%. As always, I've included two additional reports. The first one is the statement of revenue and expenditures for February. This is just informational for the board. It compares budget to actual for each account in both revenues and expenditures, as well as a student activity account summary for the month of February as well. Again, just as another reminder, the testing activity account will carry a large balance until we pay that College Board fee, which usually happens in June. Next, new for tonight, but I do, do provide this on an annual basis, is our financial projections for the board. To make projections, we need to enter information or assumptions in order to kind of project out several years. So many of these assumptions have not changed from previous years. Certainly, we make small tweaks here and there. But I'd like to take a minute and highlight some of the bigger assumptions first before we jump into the actual projections. So this is on the board book page 33, I believe.
Hold on till Maria gets there. Yeah, there? Okay.
Yeah, she's on. Okay. So under revenue, property tax collection continues to be held at 99% for these assumptions. Corporate property taxes currently this year were projected to receive $400,000 in the projections for fiscal year '21 through '24. It did decrease those to 375 because that reflects a three-year historical average, which has been our practice in the past.
So that's the corporate taxes that we're receiving are going down?
Well, I just put, for now, I just put in a three-year average. We don't get that actual number or projection until August of each year. So traditionally, our practice has been for these assumptions to do a three-year historical average. So last year, that number was lower in the projections because this year we got more money. You know, 400 is, is on the high end of what we've received in the past.
Okay.
Consumer Price Index, CPI, for fiscal, for the levy year 2020, I put in 2.3% as that is what we know it will be. And then I left it at 2% for the levy years fiscal year '21 through '24. That's something that we have done in the past as well. Evidence-based funding, I increased by 1% for fiscal year '21 and '22, and then held flat for '23 and '24. You know, there are some more recent concerns about evidence-based funding and the state being able to properly fund that moving forward. But for right now, I held it flat for the most part.
So I just want to interject to this. I think that's a really important point. The governor released a budget with two different scenarios. And one of them really does decimate evidence-based funding. So we should be aware of the possible negative impact on that for us.
Yeah, should that graduated income tax not pass?
Uh-huh, yes.
There's, that's going to be decimated.
Absolutely. This is a real, a very real risk, I think.
Yeah, I think there certainly always has been a concern from schools as to whether or not evidence-based funding was really sustainable, especially being funded at 100%. Which is something the state hasn't done in a long time.
I just think people should know, the fact that he submitted two budgets.
Yes.
It should be eye-opening for everyone.
Absolutely. And then EAB, new construction, our three-year average has been roughly $2 million. So put that in as an assumption. And then student fees and state payments right now have been held consistent. Under expenditures, there are a lot of assumptions. You know, the big ones are always related to staffing as well as benefits. So under staff salaries, this part can be a little misleading because there's two different sections where I enter in assumptions. So certified staff is increasing, salaries is increasing at 3.78% for next year. That's due in part from a teacher returning from a leave. You know, the sub was half the cost of the teacher that is coming back. But also, that doesn't account for the retirement savings because I have to enter that at a different part in the model. And so that's where, you know, some of this can be a little misleading. And so fiscal year '22 is set to increase by 3.5%. And '23 and '24, I put 3.4%. So I used our current contract as much as I could and then just kind of projected out for the future. Administrative contracts are...
So a quick question, I'm sorry. Does the '22, '23, '24, is that taken into account also the retirement savings and the, any other teacher activity that we know of? Are those straight from the CBA?
So that is straight from kind of CBA and what I know about staffing right now. The retirement piece comes down four lines later.
Okay.
And those range, those savings range anywhere from $93,000 to 278, depending on...
Thousand.
Depending on the year in which we're talking about and the number of teachers that are retiring.
Okay.
Also staffing and hiring projections, which are based off of enrollment projections, get factored into this at a different point in the model. So for example, next year, I have in the model that will be decreasing 1 FTE, holding flat for '23 and '22, and then in '24, decreasing 5.6 as well.
Yeah, it's just based on our enrollment?
Correct. That's just based on our enrollment. And then right now, medical insurance increasing at 5.25% and dental at 1.5. We'll get those actual rates for next year, next week. So for right now, it's just based off the estimates that I've received.
And then anything over what, five, a 5% increase, a split 50/50?
Correct. With the union, the employees and the district, correct.
Medical trend is closer to 6.5 right now, so that's pretty...
We're in a big cooperative that's helped keep our premiums low.
Yes, and we have not, we've been fortunately, we have not been, we've not been hitting that 6% increase in the past four or five years. Other things, supplies and materials increase at 1%. And then it's important to note that when I show you the projections in a minute, that we also always have the two lines because we take out the 2.9 million that's reserved in working cash for the field acquisitions. So moving on to page 34, these are our projections and can be a little overwhelming at first. I just want to walk you through a few things. The first column on the left is in black, and that's our current budget. So if you can go down to the yellow line, you'll see that the expected deficit for this year is $402,000. year is $402,000. That is considering that, you know, we get 100% of our revenues and 100% of our expenditures. That, I don't think has ever happened. So I do anticipate the deficit coming in a little lower than 400 for this year. If you drop down to the second yellow band, you'll see the fund balance without the $2 million that's reserved in working cash, and then the fund balance as a percent of expenditures, and then below that, the fund balance as a number of months to expend. So you can see that, you know, at the end of this year, assuming we finish with a $400,000 deficit, our fund balance would be at 48%. So then, we project out over the next four years. And in fiscal '21, you can see we're projecting a deficit of $640,816. You know, my job over the next couple of months then is to get that down as low as I can, and kind of scrub the budget. So hopefully, we won't end with a deficit of 640 when I present the budget to you. But that's where we're at about right now. So as you can see, as you go through each year, we are anticipating a deficit each fiscal year for the next four years. And if you look at the bottom right corner in fiscal year '24, you'll see if we continue to spend down, we will be at a fund balance of 37%, with roughly a little over four and a half months to operate.
And a $1 million deficit?
Yes, so the reason that is, is because we have some debt. There's some bonds coming off the books in fiscal year '23, and it's a timing issue. We get the revenue in '23, but then we have to finish paying it out in '24. So that's why you can see the revenue was so high in that year as well. So it's really a timing issue.
There's nothing you can do to impact that. I mean, obviously, we have whatever our expenditure, our traditional expenditure and revenue, but a big chunk of that is the final debt payment.
Correct.
So it diminishes in '25?
Correct.
Correct. But it's still a deficit, to be clear.
Yes.
Right. And I couldn't, I was kept looking at it, because all the rest of the numbers seem very similar in all the columns. So I was like, where, how do we go from 105 to a million?
And that's the answer, okay. Yeah, especially if you look at the revenue percentage, you're in '23, you're increasing three, a little over 3%. And then, in '24, you have, you know, a decrease in revenue. And that's because of that.
Because of that payment.
Gotcha.
And so, a couple of things the board needs to understand. This is done in March before we even do the budget. So these are projections. As we went through at length with the Finance Advisory Council, things will change. When Kristen did this projection last year with the board, and while we were doing negotiations, we were hovering around 6. Then all of a sudden, in May, maybe a teacher requests a leave of absence. Okay, so now you go from maybe a higher salary to a year-one salary. There are savings there. You get interest income you weren't expecting on from the township treasurer on our money that's in our fund balances. Like, you can only project so much of that. You can only guess so much of that. So, the goal is obviously to have a budget that has a deficit less than 640. But we use the next three or four months now to determine that. So this is kind of like worst-case scenario, right? But I would think, and this is something that always gets discussed, the board would rather see worst-case scenario and have it finished better than have, oh, we're only going to have a, you know, we're going to be in a surplus, or we're going to be at a small deficit. And then we come in at $500,000 deficit, you'd be like, what the heck is going on? So I'm preparing you for that. This is like worst-case scenario. It should end up being better once we figure out staffing, if we figure out, if there's other things, information that comes in later from the Township Treasurer's office. All that kind of gets worked into this, and that's how we get the actual budget to be lower than the projections. It could go the other way. If the state doesn't finance evidence-based funding, there could be an impact.
I didn't want to bring that up.
Correct. It could go, it could go either way.
Because again, it's 1% and then flat. So that's a big assumption.
This should be worst-case scenario.
What would also happen if we, in addition to not funding evidence-based, and also got retirement?
A cost shift?
Yeah, or they, yeah, they shift the pension burden?
If you did a cost shift, obviously, this would go up significantly. That doesn't take into effect. So if you, if you lost revenue like evidence-based funding, and you got the cost shift, obviously, your expenditures would increase and your revenues would decline. The revenue, the overall deficit would increase. Now, on a regular basis, I will tell you that I get this every year at superintendent meetings. They always say that somewhere down the line, they're going to tie fully funding evidence-based fu... I mean, it's almost like routine. We get the same message at the superintendent conference annually. It has not happened for four or five years, that they're going to eventually tie fully funding evidence-based funding to a gradual cost shift in pension. And they've tried to propose that in the past, and it's never made it out of committee, or it's never made it through the, you know, both branches, but, or both houses, I should say. But that's the threat that continually is proposed to the superintendents. That they're going to fully fund, that the legislators approve this whole evidence-based funding model. Because it's an aggressive approach. Every year, they're supposed to add like 200 million on to what they paid the previous year to continue to fund underfunded schools, and to keep schools whole. And so, that's why I think he did two budgets, one with his progressive ta... progressive income tax, and then one without, because he's trying to hold that over us now, right? So you could already see how evidence-based funding is being used as a political tool, like, hey, support me here if you want this, right? So that's been the other, you know, thing that they've been preparing us for at the state level, is trying to tie some type of cost shift into fully funding the evidence-based model, which it was never intended to do, but...
And we receive roughly $2 million this year in evidence-based funding.
I think there's a lot of focus on what the property tax system looks like, right? That's where all of this is tracking together, whether it's cost shift, whether it's evidence-based funding, whether it's the tax on the ballot in the fall. So I think it's something just, I'd say, to keep abreast of, and it's some real shifting sands. Nothing will happen immediately. It's not like on June 30th, someone has to absorb it. But I do think it's something to certainly be mindful of and budget somewhat conservatively as a result of it. That's my thought.
We're in a reassessment cycle again, so attorneys are being very aggressive. I know in Brookfield, we've all gotten mail to start now to contest increases to your property taxes, because we will be reassessed as, not for the coming year, but for the next year.
Correct, the triennial.
So, that too could impact...
Yeah, I think, you know, the important thing though is, we, this shows you, we should have three years of stability, at least, hopefully four. And it just goes back to Kristen's financial report, which is reality, right? We overspent by $3 million this month. And so, that's where you tap into that fund balance. So if you spend that down, and you need the $3 million, you don't have the $3 million, you take out a, like a payday loan, a tax anticipation warrant, to pay your bills for that month until your next set of property taxes come in. That's like the worst thing you could do as a school. So, that's why it's important, you try to keep at least three months on the books untouched.
And we had to do that once, when the funds were held.
Correct.
We had to borrow money to make payroll.
Okay, Kristen, anything else on the projections?
No.
Where are we trending in that green box? Did you touch on that, that little green footnote?
The green box is just a summary of exactly what you just said, that, right, currently we're, you know, overspending by 3 million, and that's because we haven't received our spring property tax yet. So I can't necessarily, right now, project whether or not we're going to hit the $400,000 deficit for this year or not. I do think we'll come under that, but to what extent, I can't project until we really get a full picture of our revenue and posted year expenditures. So probably, at the April meeting, I'll have much more, hopefully, a much better, accurate picture of where we should finish the year at.
Okay, and there were no questions submitted on this?
Correct.
Okay. Good job.
All right. Move to discussion information on FOIA.
Oh, we had a few FOIAs here. The list is provided. Information, response was emailed in regards to grade level. Here is information on staff, public relations professional, someone who handles media requests, social media crisis, who emailed response, the bids for the gymnastics RTU, the electronic records of the high school grading scales, and then a request on the public records of the K-students have been removed for attendance or rolled, expelled. And the responses are attached as well.
So that was a lot of FOIAs to do, Marion, so congratulations on getting through them. That's a lot of work.
All right. Any questions on those? Strategic plan and mission statement.
Okay, this is a first draft. So what I included in today, and as the board discussed, they wanted to have these discussed at the public meetings, or at least be on our public agendas, and then we work on these for the next couple of meetings, and then we'll move into the goals. This is the summary page from the summary report that was provided about the mission statement, and then the, so our mission, current mission statement's in bold. The following was the feedback that the participants submitted at the, all the different stakeholder groups participated and submitted in regards to the mission statement. And then, there's five drafts for the board to originally discuss or consider. I just took, from what the recommendations were, and our current one, and tried the best I could to piece together what we heard that day. Obviously, no one submitted any additional drafts or options for me to consider or to put on this. So I'm assuming that the board, or all the board, likes one or some of these, or portions of these.
Or I just didn't give you my comments.
Wow. I'm sorry. Yeah, I wasn't clear how we were going to do this.
I'm not sure how you want to do it. I mean, one thought would be, if there's one that, you know, the board feels is two, you know, if there's some that you guys can agree on that you want removed, then we can narrow our choices. I mean, that's something, I mean, this is a discussion for, that's a discussion.
We'll break this up into, I don't want to say a committee, but into a different piece, or do we want to open it up for discussion?
Well, I think it may be helpful to get, spend five minutes, no more than. Just getting some initial feedback on these, because I had, like, my one reaction is, I don't like the use of the phrase "the stakeholders." So anything that says "the stakeholders," I would cross off.
I immediately stopped reading those.
I did.
And it's not fair.
Right, right. So that was kind of mine. I don't want to get more than my share of five minutes, but that was, so I did wordsmith the first one. I'm happy to submit it to Kevin. I did not get around to doing that earlier today, so I apologize. But I think it was important to have the listing of who that partnership is. Like, on the first one, parents, students, staff, community, and the Board of Education. There was some good language about safe and supportive, diverse learning environment. Those were all key elements that I think should be reflected in the final statement. So I will stop there and see what everyone else has to say.
Well, if I had to pick one right now, I think it would be four, but I kind of like some of four and five, and I kind of see your point about stakeholders. But one thing that I feel strongly about a mission statement is that every single member of the organization should be able to say it without hesitation, and that it should probably, once we come to an agreement, it should be on everything that this group sends out, or like at the top of the board agendas every month, and should really drive the organization. And so, putting parents, students, staff, community is a lot for someone to always rattle off, but if we feel that it's that important, then we should include them. But stakeholders says the same thing, so, but it absolutely should be, like, if you stop the part-time, whatever, teacher in the hall, what's the mission of this organization? They should be able to say it.
I agree, but it's tough if it's a paragraph.
For sure.
Well, I think that's what...
That's why I'm saying, like, four is short. That's, I think, one of the things that draws me to it.
What I didn't like about four, though, is I like the phrase "about an ever-changing world," because we do have to be realistic about how we are preparing students, you know, to enter the world and to get jobs that don't even exist yet.
Yes. For sure, and that's why I said, I think maybe for me, some parts of four and five would be...
So here's where this gets tough. Deanna doesn't like the word stakeholders.
No, no, no.
Ramona doesn't mind it, Gina, as a...
No, but I think there's...
That's why I, what I'm thinking is, there's probably a portion of all five of these that come together, right?
I'm going to read you what I have.
Okay.
Yes, but I would, right? I would say Riverside Brookfield High School is a partnership that provides a safe and supportive...
She can't read her own reading.
I can't.
But okay, so I got, I get where you're going.
Partnership, in a diverse learning environment, where all students can be prepared with the intellectual, vocational, and social skills necessary to be responsible members of an ever-changing world. I might not be able to say it in an elevator, but maybe in that long stairway up front, I probably can. Get it out.
So there's portions of, there's portions of four, there's portions of one, right? It could be something like Riverside Brookfield High School is a partnership that will provide and support a safe and diverse learning environment for students to grow. And we could say, go back to one intellectually, vocationally, and socially, and then for...
What does everybody else think about it? Tom, Bill, Laura, what do you guys think?
I'm just wondering if at our next meeting, we can get one that's close and put it up on the screen, and as you start to tweak it, you know, as we do this, you make the change there on that screen.
So I submitted five, no one submitted any renderings back to me. I submitted it in the Friday update, no one submitted it.
So you want to just submit one next roll.
All I'm saying to you, you can start with these, and you can cut these.
Everything on it.
If you want to submit some recommendations, if there's one you specifically know we don't like pieces of, okay. Is the group okay? Should we eliminate any that say "the stakeholders"? Does that help?
No, I mean, I think, I don't think we should throw that word out right now. I think you could put in parentheses the list, and then also, until you're sure that you don't want the list, they're interchangeable, stakeholders or the list. If we find out that we're too verbose in everything we want, then maybe we're willing to make the concession and use stakeholders.
But, I, so first of all, I apologize, because I haven't been able to give it as much thought as I'd love to do on this very important topic. So I certainly welcome any type of next round that I will submit comments also. But, I mean, you know, the origin, the mission statement we have right now is pretty close to any of the versions. I mean, if there's too many words or not, yes, I get all of that, but to me, the sort of the essence of what that mission statement ought to be, and to the extent that people should even remember it, whatever, I mean, we're already, would anybody even, in the broader community, would anybody even notice that we tweaked it if we went to any of these? And I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just thinking that the process of saying, oh, do we now lose the ones that start with stakeholders? That doesn't make any sense to me. I think we need to think about it some more, and I think it would be good if we all submit our specific comments or versions.
I think Mona's point is a good one, though. No, people would not be able to repeat this in the community, but if it is pithier, or even pithy, you're going to get there a lot quicker.
I would agree. I would agree. But there's so much, to me, the thing about the current mission statement is, there's nothing wrong with it. It's actually all really good. There's nothing that bothers me, nothing, ah, why, why is that in there? It's really more like boiling it down to the essence, and...
Absolutely what I did. I just took like a couple of those phrases and said, okay, like, instead of saying, well-equipped, support, right? Support the learning, diverse, ever-changing. I was just kind of wordsmithing the current one. I wasn't, there's no, was no science here. So...
So to...
Why doesn't each board member look at these and kind of compile one and send them in? Then you'll see seven different, if I see some that's the same, I'll put two slashes by it, so it shows that two board members submitted something similar? And that could help you lower the list?
Don't go by letting open meetings act while you're doing that.
And might we want to consider...
Well, this is okay, as long as we're just talking about this.
Coming in an hour earlier for our next meeting, you know, as part of, and putting it on the screen, you know, after we've looked all those, where we could put it on the screen, and we like, you know, these are the words we really like, and here's, here's like, maybe where we're stuck, but let's get it on the screen, and let's glue to the screen what we like.
I don't think we need to, I wouldn't come in early, I would do this at the public meeting, but I think if you guys want to submit those changes, I can have it so that it's...
Ready to go.
A little more workable, so Marion can move some things around and just click on a different icon on the... on a different icon on the screen, and we could wordsmith it, but, again, you, the board should look at these five, if you want to submit something different, or strike something, or add something, I can.
Yeah, fair enough. So I think we've all got a lot of homework to do.
Yay.
That's okay.
Yeah, it is.
You know, if you get these on Thursday, then you're like, oh, let's talk about that. Because I like some of the feedback we've gotten about making it, I don't want to call it short and sweet, but where you can recite it, right? That's an important thing.
For me, it is.
And you can't recite it in paragraphs.
No.
Unless it's the pledge allegiance.
Since I wasn't here that Saturday, can, I'm not sure, did you just rework the one that was in bold, or did, or did the way that it changed, then reworked from the part in the middle?
The comments in the middle with the squares, those bolds, were the comments the different stakeholder groups submitted.
On that Saturday?
On that Saturday.
And so you kind of worked those?
So I reworked those, like, first one says, feels generic, too long, loses its meaning, should be succinct, okay? Prepare students for an ever-changing world, so that's why you see ever-changing worlds mentioned in two or three of the options. Language needs to be updated, aesthetics, is that the best word? So I took aesthetics out. Need to include social, emotional, and so that's why it says, grow social skills.
Gotcha.
All right, so I, basically, I took all the comments that came from the stakeholder groups, and tried to fit them into the, you know, add that or tweak that into the current one, to come up with these five recommendations. If you wanted, then now the board can take this and peel that onion some more.
Yeah, because I think it's important, we look through the notes from the feedback of each of those four, five groups, five, six groups, and how, you know, we presented out what was important in the district, and make sure that it's captured in the version of the mission statement that we.
That's what's here, the notes, and then there's other group notes that were talking about the goals and stuff, but the board got that summary report, too, so if you wanted to look back at that, you could.
Right.
So I think we all got a little homework.
Sure.
You put that in, we have a month, plenty of time.
So seven options apiece?
Yeah, if I see one that's.
Is that what I heard?
If I see one that's repetitive, I can kind of combine them, and then there might be six only, or someone, wait, that's a bit.
Or you can do, this is, I'm doing one, and this is why, you have to have seven reasons why. But I think we get the idea, that's going to get the feedback, you know, I think we've got, you know, thought, we're very involved.
I will send this page.
Just this one page.
I will send this one page as a Word document, so you can cut and paste.
Right, because I would.
Would that help people?
Yes.
That will, because I went and printed this off, and it's sitting in one of my work folders. Probably in the back of the seat. All right. So, all right, let's do additional, let's move on, additional discussion items, at this point, the meeting, Board of Education members were requested to add an additional discussion item. Right? We'll do consent agenda, approval of minutes, and I wanted to, we.
There's four items, I think, consent.
Educational tour, we talked about student handbook, and we talked about the student handbook before, I kind of want to revisit that, and maybe, maybe even give us kind of a recap of what we talked about, because I think it's a good, valid point.
Yeah, so on the student handbook, there was the one-page summary, and the addition, so what I'm asking is that the one particular addition they wanted to add, we not add.
That was the, so that was not submitted, but Wes updated me.
Can you show what page we're talking about here, please?
Yeah, so we're, it's on, it's in our packet, it's on that page with the handbooks, where, where's the, with the handbooks?
Eighty-six?
It's page eighty-six, because we've gone back and forth, let me just.
Well, eighty-six is where the summary.
Yeah, where's the summary, page eighty-six, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, so.
And I, I will give you the reason why, I just want to find.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six and eighty-seven.
That's the first one, Laura, from what Wes shared with me this afternoon.
Eighty-six, so it's just.
Exam exemptions.
Yeah, very good.
Yes.
Top left, pages thirteen and fourteen, modified language E, a student who has zero code of conduct violation.
Right, and so I'm asking that we not add that language, that students who have zero code of conduct violations. And the reason why, that code of conduct applies to athletes, or people who are in competitions, it applies to them on weekends, in the summer, if they're at their cottage, it applies 24/7, which is kind of a different set of scrutiny than other students, who may not be in a sport here, but in a sport somewhere else, or whatever. And so that is a different requirement that that student has, that the other students don't. So where a student who's in a sport may have had an altercation, and, because if you look at the code of conduct, a student could swear at a professor in a heat of rage, and get a code of conduct, and say, well, you know, I'm sorry, you know, and that would follow them, and there are consequences for that, there's some, you know, laws, it could be mitigated, but that would follow them, whereas a student who is not in a sport could have the same incident, and they would not be precluded from this exemption from their exam.
So Wes.
Let me finish, please. While looking through the student handbook, there are multiple sources of discipline, there are three places, and next year, when we're done with the vision, we'll come back to his handbook. There's the policy, seven-point-five-something, where there's all these different things that if students do, there are consequences, and that applies to all students. There are the pillars that apply to all students, and there are consequences. So in the student handbook, there are three additional sources of cause and effect for behaviors that are equal to all students. So I would just like to not have this as being part of whether or not you can have an exam exemption, because I don't think it's fair.
So I have a couple of questions, one, you need to move them to get this out of the consent calendar.
Right, that would be the first.
That's an operation, we need to do that before we can have this discussion.
That's procedural.
Yes. So do you want to make a move to remove this from the consent calendar?
Well, or we can keep it in the consent with this modification, that we just don't add this line.
I don't think you can keep it in the consent, I think we're having a discussion about it now, that kind defeats the purpose of being in the consent.
Okay.
Correct, and these need to be voted on separately.
Okay, that's fine. Because that's what we agreed to about all these, the first reads, second reads, so, right, so now that has to be removed procedurally.
Okay.
So Wes brought this up to me, we always meet prior to the meeting at six o'clock, so this is the first I've heard of it, I tried, I did get ahold of Dave, I think the concern is valid, you know, obviously.
Time out. Can we just sign off? Laura needs to make a motion to remove it from the consent.
Okay, so I approve that we pull the student handbook from the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, Tom Jacobs.
And we'll do.
You're just doing all in favor.
All in favor.
Yes.
All right.
All opposed?
Okay, and then I guess what would happen is, are there any other items that people want pulled from the consent? Well, that would be what they would do in a typical meeting, so, okay. And then typically, we would vote on the consent, and then go back to.
We'll vote on this separately.
Yeah. Go back to the.
So we're going to vote on the consent, so we need a motion.
Where is it? Mary Ann, could you move down, sorry. Board of Education, Township High School, District 208, Co-County Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items approved, minutes from the meetings held on February 11, '22, and '25, 2020, open and closed, educational tour request, girls cross-country, IHSA membership 2020, 2021 school year, as presented in the March 10th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet. Is that correct?
Second thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hannah's going second, and we'll do a roll call, right?
Second?
Ms. Salas.
Yeah, Ms. Salas.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Esco?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Summer?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Now we get to talk about student handbook.
Okay.
So I think.
Thank you for the indulgence, I might.
No, we're great.
I think the point Laura brought up, and I would ask Gina, if you have any, I spoke briefly with Dave, again, the only thing I'd ask is, you know, when we submit these requests, if I could get them, you know, the day before the meeting, it will give me some time to do a legwork, so I could pull it, or get you some background on how this all happened, so I'm kind of working on the 12th, at the 12th hour here. But what I was able to find out was that the parent, the parent committee asked that this be put on, but after talking with Wes, and then I called Dave Mann, and I was able to get him before the basketball game at seven o'clock, the, I do understand Laura's point. If two kids are at a party in Brookfield, and they get a drinking ticket, and one kid's an athlete, and one kid's not an athlete, they're just a good student or an AP student, the kid that's the athlete, the additional consequence comes that he's getting suspended for a percentage of his season. Neither would get, let's say there's, this is an incident where there's no school discipline, right? Because if you have a suspension, you don't get to do an exam exemption either, so that's covered.
Right.
But, so that where this comes is that, okay, the two students that are off campus, they go to a party, something happens, the kid that's an athlete gets an additional consequence besides the ticket he gets in town, a portion of his season is suspended. The kid that doesn't, doesn't get that additional suspension or anything at the high school. And now it's like a third consequence of, now you can't be exempt from your exams as well, like, it's kind, it's a, it's a, it's like, almost like piling on. That's the way Wes explained it to me, and when I gave that example to Dave, he saw that as well. So what we could do is approve the student handbook tonight with the removal of the exam exemption language for further review by the administration, and then we can tweak that. And then this way, exam, this is the first year, if I understood this correctly from Dave's explanation, he was driving to the game, was this is the first year that exam exemptions are actually put, this detailed into the handbook. And so all we could do is remove exam exemptions from the handbook for another year, since the handbook is technically board policy, and leave it as an administrative procedure to establish at a later date, so that it's not in the handbook, and we could review this in a little more detail.
So that seems like a, I'm sorry.
I, I, no, I do think a lot of the exam exemption language is in the handbook.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds like we're, you're going a little blind here, trying to make a decision right now, and I think that's not.
That's why I'm saying we would approve it either with no exam, Dave said we could pull the exam exemptions from the handbook.
Or we could pull this line and leave it the same as last year.
Correct.
But I'd also like to hear more about if it was a parent committee suggestion, I think that's important to take into consideration, and then also, as the code of conduct applies to athletes, you know, we do hold our athletes to a different standard, they are representing the school, so I think that should not be taken or dismissed. So I, I think we need to allow for more research on this, since the issue's been raised, but I'm certainly not, and your language is probably fine, just to say, hold it in advance until there's.
I need to approve, the problem that we get in is, when we have these two reads, and I don't get the questions beforehand, is, like, the next board meeting's April 10th, or April 14th, we missed the deadline for the printer. So we have to make a decision, like, are we just pulling this line, and it won't be in for next year?
So when we go through the handbook, so again, you know, and I've signed it for four kids, but then I, you know, I read through the handbook again, there are the pillars, and people probably forget, that the pillars of conduct is also a higher standard, so we don't only hold our athletes to a higher standard, we actually hold all RV students to this higher standard. And so that's why, and then, again, in the handbook, when we look at, on page 34, this board policy, seven, colon, one, nine, zero, here, too, is very high, so riddled throughout this handbook are high standards that we continually repeat, that we're holding all our students, not just our athletes.
And that's appropriate, I just don't like the idea of pivoting away from what the parent committee, as well as the athletic department has in here, in terms of code of conduct violations, I think it's, it's not a good precedent.
I don't know if the parent committee, what I feel uncomfortable about is if they were brought to their attention, the pillars, that was very prominent a few years ago, it's kind of not as prominent anymore, when Pam was principal, that we talked about it all the time. And I don't know if the parent committee went over this discipline behavior expectations, I mean, I would like to know more of that conversation.
Well, that's why when we submit the questions, there were no questions submitted, if there were questions submitted, I'd have Dave Mann in here tonight to present. When I got this at 6:30, I can.
One of the thoughts of this, of the, of the parents was that this, the final exam exemptions is a pretty high privilege. You have to reach a high bar. Now, the, the example of, you know, kid could play, you know, baseball, kid could play club baseball, and one kid gets to take the exam, and one kid doesn't, that's, that's a, that's a real, I mean, I can see that, too, and you are kind of double jeopardy, you missed half, you missed, you know, half the season, then aren't I punished enough? I don't know. I think, you know, my, my thought was, what I told Kevin, I said, I, I wouldn't be, you know, opposed to taking an outlet, the same as last year, and reevaluating it, and kicking it around, I do think we need to print it, to be fair to the students.
But I would like to know more about what Deanna's saying, I remember, when, when I met with Dave, my comments was going to be, is I, I thought that this was from the parent group, from the parents, so I would, and we didn't, I didn't get in depth with Dave as to how it came about, what was brought up, what, so I don't, I don't know that background of it, I'd be in favor of pulling it for this year, but it is, it is a privilege. Right, like, it is a privilege.
But the list is still long, though, I mean, they can't have any expenses, why should an athlete lose half of their, you got two students equally, they both commit the same problem, but the athlete's going to lose half of their season and the option to not test?
Because they signed a code of conduct.
Because, right, because they voluntarily joined the athlete club.
They're held to a higher standard.
They are.
If you're a lawyer, and you get indicted, you lose your law license, you don't just go to jail, right? If you're not a lawyer, just go to jail.
Yeah, I don't have a license to.
I just feel like the code of conduct code, when you read through it, it's inconsistent, one could be for rude behavior, and one could be for drinking, or selling drugs.
So I think the proper, probably the way that, so how do we, how do we move forward? Do we vote on to, on to do it as it is, and then, and then it, then it either passes or doesn't, and then we come back and vote on it without it? What's the, what would be the process? What was your, who's the process?
I think you have to ask for a vote with this as amended, and then elaborate what the amendment is, and then, then that's what you'd be voting on.
Right.
Unless you wanted to vote with it as is, and I'm not sure that's particularly productive, right, because it sounds like we're all veering towards not adopting it as is, and now you have to, you can't vote on it as published, you have to argue how you're going to amend it, and then ask for the vote.
So I think. I think we need to be careful of asking people to be parts of committees and doing work on this, and then all of a sudden, on the last minute, we're going to change, so, I mean, there, I think she brings, I think Laura brings up a very valid point, but I think, you know, we have some procedures in place, so that you can ask, and I could have people come and answer these questions, and now, you know, so I would say.
I just think it's over-the-top punitive, and it never existed before, I think we need more information before we want to be that punitive, I mean, we're talking about opening up opportunities for our students, and this is like a major sledgehammer, you know, crash.
There are. A final exam exemption, I mean, honestly, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty nice bonus.
It's cushy.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a sledgehammer.
When my kid started going here, and I was like, what do you mean, you don't, you're not taking your final exams? Everyone, like, that's what you do on the last week of school, you take your final, no, I give him exempt. What?
Yeah, but they have to do a lot to get that, so it's not that if we don't put this sentence in here, they're not going to get it, they, they can't have had multiple tardies, they can't have unexcused absences, they can't have any suspensions, there's a.
They can't have unexcused absences. They can't have any suspensions. There's a lot of things. And I think whatever the rules are for final exam exemptions, they should be equal.
But also not to complicate things, but because this has been, I mean, the parent committee has been involved, so, but this has been run through. If we vote on this as is, I don't have any problem voting for it. And then, you know, it's a, it's a year.
And we can change it.
It's a relatively minor issue, in my opinion. And if people hate it, they will tell us. I mean, it's also not a...
And how many kids, what I'm sitting here thinking is, how many kids are we talking about? God, I hope not, none. But many kids make their decisions sometimes.
I think, I think that's one of those things where I think, I think I was absolutely ready to go yes on it, walking into today, but then, I, I wanted to have this discussion because I think it's an important discussion. But I think back to Tom's point, is that, well, you know, with, to be fair to the process, I think you need to vote on it as is, and then, and then if it passes...
Yeah, see what, exactly. See what happens.
It's a year, and we just move on, and then we do it better next year. There is a process of doing it better. And, and we can discuss that at the parent committee.
So just go through the prioritization. What was that process?
No, we want it this way. And then that's, that's...
Kevin, can you give us two seconds on what was that process to get us to this point?
So we have a committee, it's Dave Mannan, Assistant Principal, Kylie Linquist, who was here tonight, Beth Augustine, Dean of Students, there's some staff representatives, there's some PTO representatives, and then Gina served, there was a student representative for the Principal Student Advisory Board, and then Gina, as the board member, goes through like a final review of all the changes, and goes through that with Dave and the recommendations.
And this was published last month?
And we, we reviewed it as a first read last month. Dave Mannan presented on this last month.
Yes.
This did not come up. I didn't receive any questions on it for this meeting.
Was the student or the parents involved? Were they parents of athletes? Or was it student?
From what Dave told me today, when I, like I said, when I called him, when me and Wes were meeting at 6:30, 6:45, he said that this was actually a recommendation from some of the parents.
So Gina, you're a representative. When this issue came up, do you remember talking about it?
Well, I remember Dave, like I said, I remember Dave bringing up that this was a parent issue, that they had wanted it to be included. And I'll tell, I mean, my son plays hockey. I don't think that counts as like, like a sport. But, but if my kid did something like that, and he blew his exemption, I'd be fine with it. I'd be like, well, you shouldn't have done it. You know, it's, you're not gonna be exempt from your college exams for anything. So I would be fine with it. But to your point, it was not something that I, that I thought of. It was not something that Dave and I had discussed.
I just know we have had, having history at this table, we've had good kids come, really good kids, and at the 11th hour, make a, a choice for no reason at all, and be honest that, yes, I did that, and have significant harsh, harsh consequences. And the board at that point thought, well, we can't be so rigid. I mean, it changed the students for being honest, and just making, it was a, a good student, never had any issue, great grades. And we thought, well, we need to give the administration some leeway here because this was really over the top harsh for, young people can make spontaneous decisions.
But we're not talking about withholding, walking across the stage for graduation or anything of that magnitude. We're talking about a final exam exemption.
Well, if you're a senior, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. And if you can't get it because you blew up at your coach one time...
So I see this two ways tonight.
Because somebody else could blow up at their coach, but they got it.
I think, I see this as two ways. I think, I think you're bringing up a fair point to be considered. And I also think, if there's, the board established some protocol, that if we were in the, within those protocols, it could have had some of this color provided for the board to vet this a little better and to make a decision. We don't have that tonight. At the same token, if the board had that color, are we gonna punish kids for one year because we didn't submit our question on time, and we weren't prepared, right? So I see this as like, okay, are we gonna go one year where this language is entered, and realize this was bad, but the kid that gets the short end of the stick for one more year because we didn't submit our question on time and have somebody here to explain it, or we didn't discuss this at the last meeting when the assistant principal's here, right? So I mean, we, we, if we really want to take in the big picture, we should, we should approve the handbook, and I can work with the administration. We have stuck a, in the past, we have either changed one page, or we've added a sticker that gets stuck inside the handbook at a later date to, one, you know, to fix that one page if we need to amend it. I mean, if the board wants to do that, we can. Otherwise, I would say then, if we're not gonna, if we're not willing to do it that way, then I would say you should approve it as the committee proposed, and it's been on for two reads. So if we, if we want to approve it with an amendment, like, at least the majority of this can go to the printer, and we can try to do one insert, right? We've done that in the past, when there was a mistake, or board members changed on an election year. I'm just going back when you were principal.
Yeah, we also have parents and students sign off. It says, you know, we reserve the right to make changes to the online version, and that, you know, that will be the most current version, and then we provide a printout at residency.
Residency.
So it would not be, in my opinion, it would not be a big deal to, to have to add a sentence and do that work.
So I would approve it with, with the removal of exam exemptions for further review by the, the committee. And I would, if, and then this way, that gives me time to have Dave come back to another meeting. But I would reiterate to the board, two reads, a process of submitting, there's some things in place so that we don't get stuck in this position going forward.
Right.
Well, somebody's gotta make a motion.
Okay. So we're gonna make, so this is the way I, I'm seeing. We're gonna make a motion that we're gonna approve this with...
Minus the final exam.
Minus the final exam.
Language.
Language. And we're gonna reevaluate that line. Okay. Laura, can you write, can you read that motion?
So we're gonna say, without the final exam exemption language...
Upon, yeah.
Language upon...
Further review with the committee.
By the committee.
By the committee.
By the committee or administration?
Committee.
Committee, I think we need to be...
I'd like to know more about why the parents...
Yeah.
Further review.
You brought it up.
By the committee. Okay. Okay, and so the, so I move that the board approve the 2021 parent handbook...
Student handbook.
Student handbook, without the final exam exemption language, upon further review by the committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Tom's second. This is just, it's a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, I have.
Old business. Life safety capital items.
No update. Oh, wait, you had the bit. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm still writing mine.
Yeah, give him a second.
The handbook, Wes.
Technically, it's a separate item. I'll give you that one. Technically, it's part B, what page it is.
I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're here, Dr. Kristin.
Wow.
This begins on page 94. Thank you.
Sorry, Kristin, go ahead.
So on page 94, this is a second read for the gymnastics room rooftop air handling unit. We are presenting a recommendation from DLA Architects to award the bid to Oakbrook Mechanical Services. Based upon their bid amount, they were the lowest bidder at $54,625. DLA contacted Oakbrook Mechanical and reviewed their bid to make sure it met all the specifications. They also completed reference checks. DLA, though, has worked with Oakbrook Mechanical in the past, and has been pleased with their service, as well as Joel Haji, who is our Director of Maintenance here as well. So I would be asking for approval tonight for this.
It's money, so we need a roll call and a...
Right, motion.
Okay, I'll read the motion. Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves Oakbrook Mechanical Services, Inc. to the base bid price of $54,625 for the gymnastics roof RTU as presented in the March 10, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Need a second?
Second.
Do a roll call.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Tosca?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Yes.
Textbook adaption.
Second read, no, some, no questions were submitted, requesting approval.
Yeah, I just had the one question. Were they, were they classroom books?
Uh, they're classroom sets, yes. But the, so the thing that you have to understand is that if there's one cla, if there's five sections, or five different teachers, they each have a classroom set. That's why it looks, yes.
That's all I wanted, because there were so many. I thought if they weren't classrooms, then we should see an offset on cost. Okay? Okay.
You gotta have a motion.
I was gonna read it.
Go ahead.
Kylie brought in at the last minute.
Okay. What is it?
It's for Honors English 10.
What's the name of the book, Mary Ann?
Foundations of Language Literature.
2019? Have you read?
Yeah, and...
That's on here. It's in here, yeah.
In College Physics for AP Courses.
Yep.
Physics, oh, Discovery Education课本.
Mm-mm.
That's not on here.
And then, yeah, that's right. That must be the change.
So it's a new book, or...
Or it's a substitute book for this?
It's a substitute.
For the AP Physics?
Because they couldn't get the other book.
For the Physics of Every Day, or the College AP Physics? See, this is what Kylie, Kylie should know at home.
Oh, boy.
Okay, we won't approve it today, then. We'll have another read at April.
Yeah, we'll have to...
Yeah, they're for next year, so...
Yeah. We'll have to push that. All right.
New business.
Wait, can we put that on the consent?
To money, right?
Money. I would prefer not to.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
All right, let's move to payment of bills.
There were three questions submitted in regards to the bills. The first one, I think, just a general question, I'm not sure. Student Chromebooks, the version we currently have is Lenovo 100E second generation, and they cost $200 each. This does not include the Google license or the insurance that goes along with the Chromebooks. Board Book Page 203, Riverside District 96, is for transportation for McKinney-Vento students. We currently have 24 students that are McKinney-Vento students. Currently, two students receive cab service that we split with District 96. We have students that go to District 96 as well, which is why we're paying District 96. We currently have one student receiving a bus pass for transportation. We may need to provide in the future. Board Book Page 211, we spruce it up landscaping for snow removal. The contract is per occurrence, depending upon the depth of the snow. And this includes the zoo lot, the emergency drive, the out parking lot, Rockefeller, and the stadium lot, so that whole area, plus the, the staff parking.
So if it snows more, it's more.
Yes, so two to four inches costs $575. Five to eight inches costs $720. Should we have a foot of snow, it would cost $890.
I was just curious. I was just, I was curious.
And then we do all the salting ourselves.
Okay. Well, that saves us money.
Yes, and that was it for the board questions.
All right. We have to...
Motion to approve.
For motion for that, right?
Dial that up for Mary Ann. Okay, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the March 10, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
All right. Now, I have to roll call on that because of money.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Tosca?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Staffing summary, minimum course enrollment approval, which is what we, Kylie went through that.
Correct. I just need to have a motion to approve the courses under the 20 threshold.
Oh, and actually, just for everyone's knowledge, on page 99 is the, are the members of the Handbook Committee, if you're wondering. Where are we at? Mary Ann, 228? All right, here we go. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves in accordance with District Policy 6:31, minimum course enrollment, the list of courses for the 2020-2021 school year with projected enrollment below 20 students based on the current student enrollment data as presented in the March 10, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
All right, like a boss now. Let's go.
The registration fees.
Begins on Board Book Page 235.
Any questions submitted on these, Kristin?
There was one question submitted in regards to activity fees. So I am not recommending any changes, although I did highlight the athletic fee for the third sport, because the board had discussed in the past, possibly looking at whether or not we wanted to continue to offer or require a $100 fee for that. So last year, there were 38 students that participated in three sports. Unfortunately, we do not keep track of the number of students that participate in a performance and competitive, and whether or not, how many. We just keep track of the numbers as a whole. We don't keep track of necessarily knowing who has paid that fee twice, and whether or not they would pay that fee a third time or a fourth time. We can certainly get that data, but we don't have that data readily available to us.
I think my, I'm sorry, I think my question was actually in, related to fees about the cost of Chromebooks and...
Ah, okay.
And how mu, yeah, that's kind of related to this.
Sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead. Do you know that answer?
Oh, I, I, I shared it in, in the bills. So we use the Lenovo...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We purchased the Lenovo 100E second generation, and they cost $200 each. So that doesn't include the Google license for four years or insurance. And then also, in the past, we've had a $75 technology fee to cover some of the other software programs that we provide to students. So all of that is included in the $400 cost.
Right. So a lot of that is the software licensing.
Correct, but also, I believe the insurance costs $60 for the four years, and then the Google license that we provide for that also costs, I believe...
Google license?
Mm-hmm. We have to, we have to purchase a Google license.
I'd like to know more about that, because G Suite for Education is free. Like, the backbone is free. So what are we paying Google for?
I don't have that readily available, but I do know that we purchase a license for that.
I said, you're sold.
Well, it's, it's actually the right for you to be, kind of like, Google the doctor needed for the rest of your life, right?
Not only has something to do with our vault and the storage.
Oh, is it, could it be the, it probably goes with the Gmail.
Yes.
I bet it does. And your archiving.
See, I remember something.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Yes, you're right. And I don't use that in my job.
My desk.
No, I bet you're right. It's, it's the vault, and it's the Gmail, the archiving of the emails, because they have to be there for so long. You're probably right.
All right. So my thought here on this is, the first read is to take off the third activity. So a child, so a student has first sport, second, there's only two levels. There's first sport, and then every other sport. But if you have an, an activity, like you're in, you know, the, the band, and then a sport, and the second sport, it would just be, you know, because you're paying for, to be in the band as well, right? Or marching band or something.
That's a course fee. That's separate than the performance.
Performance would be like... It might be this competitive activity. So it's a, so if you're in a competitive activity in the fall, you play a sport in the winter, you play a sport in the spring. You're getting two sports in it. So there's just two categories instead of three, right?
I think we need more analysis around this. I mean, I would hate to do that change in a vacuum, which I think is what she was saying. Like, you need to go back and see who actually does performance, competitive, athletic.
Okay. I was looking... I was looking at.
It's gonna be more than thirty-eight hundred.
I was looking, if we're doing what you're saying, I think to answer it would be way more than thirty-eight hundred, maybe not way, way more, but I was looking at it as if you pick first sport, second sport, we shouldn't charge for a third sport, and we do the same thing with activities, if you're after two things, we would allow them to do the third one for free.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, too, I, I just.
I did not, I did not, we did not prepare this to like, has a combo, like, hey, I do one, one activity, one sport.
Right.
That's not, that wasn't the same, that's the same thing we were thinking.
I, I, I just wanted to open it for a discussion, because I think, I think we're hitting the kid too much on three, three times, I think, there, there should be two, we need it. My thought is that there's a kid out there, and his dad's like, you can't afford three, you only get two, and he would do three if we didn't have that. And I don't think we'd get enough money out of it to make it.
I, yeah, but I think we're, again.
And if we get, when more students play three sports, isn't that good?
Where I think you're still kind of, the way your explanation is, I think, is it's still muddy and I would say if it's, if a kid plays two sports, the third sport's free, if a kid does two activities, their third activity would be free.
I'm fine with that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, the way you're explaining it is like, hey, if he's in, uh,
Well, that was.
He's in a performance activity, and, and then he's also in a sport, their second sport would be free, like, that's not how, I would do it that way, right?
No, and I think we probably need analysis on activities. Because we've never looked at activities and that, so I don't even know that I'm ready to throw that in, because we've had no data, no analysis on how many kids are in multiple activities. I mean, I'm comfortable with saying the third sport, we don't charge for sport, but we've never seen any data on how many kids are in multiple activities, or performance activities, or.
We, we do share that out with the board in, in the fall every year, the problem with that is, um, we have a, a handful of activities that are free, and then we have the competitive ones are seven, and then we have the performance ones, which are a hundred. The issue is, we haven't broken out, like, because we have some kids that will do six activities, I can't sit here and tell you how many kids are in that three-plus category where they've paid three times, I can tell you it certainly happens. Um, you could do the fall play, the musical, and robotics, and that's, you're right, three fees right there, I mean, you could do chess, you could do a whole combination of different things, math team, et cetera. So, um, we do have the data on the number of activities kids participate in, but not the different categories.
Haven't broken out, right?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, this is a first read, I'm coming back next time and just adding the third sport.
I can, I can certainly work to get that data.
But is this required? Recommendation in terms of utilization and how it's reflected, and I think there's, you know, clearly, there's a price break between performance, competitive, and athletics, like, what, why, what is that, um, hundred dollar delta supposed to represent, right? Is that uniform cost, is that coaching cost, I think, I need to understand some of what the cost of an activity is versus a sport.
And we did that a couple of years ago, so like, a competitive activity would be like, I think, is math team is a, is an example of competitive activity, where they compete against, competing against other schools. Right, so there's a stipend, there's still a bus fee, there's some things that helps offset some of the cost to the.
So is there a waiver program available for those? There is for athletics.
Athletics and activities, any, any student fees have waiver activities and payment plans.
Okay.
To help the families.
So I, I hear what you're saying, Wes, I'd just like to see more of a kind of analysis and recommendation to look at all of these, acknowledging that our students are involved in many, many things. What's, what's the right recipe to not overburden a family?
Right.
And what would be the hit to the budget, then? Two, if we're gonna start to do deep. So, did we need to approve something today to be published?
No, no, this is the first read, this is like, the discussion time.
Yeah. Because we do know, with the thirty-eight students play three sports, so that loss, and the third sport was a hundred dollars, was it?
It's a hundred dollars, yeah, we lose thirty-eight hundred dollars. But I might, my thought is we gain ten kids playing a sport, and that's probably a better trade-off.
Yeah, and we should monitor that, and, but at least, you know, we know those numbers, yeah, but we don't have.
That's just my thought, going into next time.
I have an opinion.
Oh, yes, well.
Sure, you can have an opinion.
I can have an opinion?
That's why we're here, to have opinions.
Okay, um, I, I, I hesitate to just, like, get rid of it, or get rid of, because it's harder to bring anything back when you need it. So what if there was a diff, just maybe a, a different, I don't know, and again, you don't have to like it, I'm just throwing it out there, but what if we reduced first, second, and third in a way, kept the three spo, kept it for the third sport, but.
Maybe you go to like, one fifty, one hundred fifty.
Yeah, or like, one seventy-five, one twenty-five, seventy-five, or, I, you know, I don't know.
Because hockey's a half sport, if they have.
Well, I think the first sport at two hundred, I think the analysis, that two hundred for the first sport is pretty important. Because that definitely helped bring back our sports, we had, we were in significant trouble without having any contribution for.
Right, we were talking about cutting sports.
Right, we were talking about cutting, so, the two hundred for the first sport, and then a hundred for the second.
Hundred fifty.
It's a hundred fifty, so.
I think, I don't, I, I think we just need to get the board some data, what we can pull, just what, what one of the other board members recommended, just to see, like, okay, if it's, if it's similar amount, and this, all these come out to be less than a total of ten thousand dollars, it's not a major impact to the budget, and it is giving some relief to families, and it's helping the board potentially increase their goal of engagement. But before we do that, we should wait to see what the, what data Kristen can come up with.
Could we also get a little history on, um, how many people were in three sports, because I think thirty-eight is a high number.
You get that, you get that every year.
Get that in the fall as well.
Yeah, but, but, well, when we come back to talk about these numbers, I don't remember us having thirty-eight students play three sports for a couple of years.
What we have is.
Varsity sports, a lot less.
What we have is somebody that's gone three sports for four years, but we'll get freshmen that will play three sports, that's about the total of thirty-eight kids.
And that number does fluctuate from year to year, I think, you know, okay, before that, it was only like, twenty or something like that.
Yes, right.
It does, it does.
This is a higher number than I've seen it in the three years.
What, uh, when is that report out? When, we could go back in board book and look at some of that, too.
I'm going right now.
I just don't know which month.
In August, uh, Dave and Brendan come and report out on the number of students that are involved in
Here, I'm lucky.
The number of different activities, and then also, three times a year, Brendan comes and reports out on
Each season.
Fall, winter, and spring, and that also provides the financial piece of, you know, how much, and it's just a snapshot, but like, for example, um, he'll come at the next, I'm assuming, the next board meeting to report out on winter, um, and he'll give a snapshot of how much money the district has brought in from the winter season as a whole. Um, and again, that doesn't include payment plans, it's just a snapshot of where we're at right now. Um, so I do have all of that information, uh, that's, and it's also readily available to the board.
Is it something that we, uh, do we consider, uh, giving any type of breaks to families that have multiple, uh, children at the same time, who are in, who are very active, you know, different activities? Uh, I, I doubt there's a way to capture that.
No, we used to, we used to.
Yeah.
Okay. Multiple kids in the school than there was. It was small, I don't remember what it was, but there was something.
Yeah, because you could have two kids playing three sports, each has six sports, but it doesn't go like, well, you always pay the first three, and then you get three, great, yep, that's not. But then you could have three kids in the school, I mean, that, from a big Catholic family myself, that happened in my high school.
I don't think I'd be able to capture that data unless I went kid by kid.
Right.
Yeah, that's a lot.
And I don't, and, and I would oppose to, to changing it that much, I've just noticed over, over the year, to Laura's point, it's like eighteen kids, twenty kids, that's thirty-eight kids. I don't, I don't, I've just been watching that. I think I talked to some guys a few years back about it, and it wasn't popular.
Okay, we'll get some more data.
We'll get some more data, then we'll look at it, because we don't have to vote on anything, let's go to something we are voting on. The police, radio, intergovernment agreement.
So this has been finalized, uh, the board and Village of Riverside are splitting the portion that, um, was originally suggested Brookfield contribute to. And so, uh, I think the village voted on this last night, our portion would be, I think, just around thirty-two thousand, a little slightly over thirty-two thousand.
Let's open this for discussion, um.
I'm happy to see it resolved, so thank you for everyone who worked on it.
Agreed.
Nikki's looked at this and.
Yep, Brian Crowley does our intergovernment agreement, we've just been reviewing, we've done a couple of drafts with, back and forth through the attorneys.
We added some, some language here with the attorney that states that basically, if the technology changes, there's a good faith agreement for everybody to come back to the table. I think that was, that was the gist of it, okay?
Correct.
That covers our technology-changing piece.
Okay.
We went back and forth on that, and I think we got it, we got it right.
And it is thirty-two thousand even, I don't see any.
Yes.
On that, okay.
Yeah, and then I read in some section of it that should something happen in the future, that's not related to our action.
Correct, three C.
We don't.
Yeah.
We're not on the hook.
Okay, um, any more discussion, I, I, you know, like to.
No, I just think it's a shame that Brookfield, we, we have enough students here that Brookfield did not partner with the other communities and contribute, it's just really sad. As a Brookfield resident, I'm equally disappointed. How they didn't understand, you know, I mean, they have their own budget, I mean, we went into deficit spending this month, and to say, well, you have money, you should buy it, I mean, this is police equipment. Your kids are here, and board members have their kids here. Yes. Board members sitting on Brookfield board have their kids here, enjoying all the things here. That's really sad.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd like to publicly thank North Riverside.
Yes.
And the village officials, the trustees, uh, for just doing the right thing, North Riverside sends less than a quarter of the students, we have over sixteen hundred, what did you say, sixteen something?
Sixteen eleven.
And we don't even, we send, what, three hundred and fifty kids here?
I know.
And, I, I mean, I am proud to live in North Riverside, I'm proud to represent North Riverside, and just thank you for doing the right thing.
Absolutely, and they, and, and the thing is, is that, uh, North Riverside always steps up, right? Like, they have been a good neighbor, right? Like, they've helped us with the field, they've helped us with this agreement, they've helped us, whenever we ask them, they are very helpful, so they, they, um, have always been a great neighbor, it's a shame.
It's pretty much how it is to live there.
I know, I know.
It's such a great community, it just, it is.
Yeah, and especially after the whole parking and the asking for multiple parking studies, multiple light studies, multiple landscape studies, the amount of excessive money for the parking that the whole community enjoys for the field, for the little bulldog football teams, for the swimming, for everything we use this school for. Everything Brookfield has asked for, all this extra money, and they've asked for the vault, we increased that vault, we hold almost an acre of water underground, and to not contribute thirteen thousand dollars to the police radios, it's just, it's really sad.
Well, I think, I think, uh, talk to Gina's point, I, but thank you for the, the intergovernment agreement in Riverside, North Riverside, I'm glad we got it done. I mean, that was something we needed to get done, and got done, and then, uh, you have a president for less than a year, I think we got, we got a win here, so, let's.
Yes, thank you, Wes, for spearheading it and taking care of it.
Well, Ben, Ben did most of the legwork here, but, you know, it was definitely, we, we met and, you know, we got it done, so, that's the important part for the children, right? All right, let's read the motion.
Uh, okay, the Board of Education Township High School, District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves a police radio repeaters intergovernmental agreement between District two oh eight, the Village of Riverside, and the Village of North Riverside, as presented in the March tenth, two thousand and twenty board agenda packet.
Second.
Second, Gina, and we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Durkin.
Yes.
Ms. Tosca.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes.
Ms. Towner.
Yes.
Ms. Seales.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes. That's good, I'm glad that's done. Auditor contract extension.
First read, uh, we met with the finance advisory council, and Kristen is recommending that we do an extension with our current auditor. And Kristen, you want to go, go into any more of the details?
Sure, we also recently went out to bid in two thousand and seventeen, um, which is why we're asking for an extension, uh, right now. Also, uh, this year, the provisor township, all of the schools within, uh, the provisor township, uh, completed a survey of auditor costs, um, and, I mean, we're certainly well below the cost, which ranges, um, from twenty-four thousand to forty-eight thousand, that certainly varies depending on the size of the district, um, but I feel very confident in, in recommending, uh, Evans Marshall MPs. Um, and this cost has decreased, uh, from the current cost by five hundred dollars, and that also is due to the fact that the auditor is familiar with, um, where our financial documents are, and as a result, doesn't have to spend as much time on sites because he has access to documents in other ways, but again, this is a first read.
Okay, and, and there were no questions submitted, correct?
No, and this already has been reviewed by our legal counsel as well.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Board comfortable with us going on the consent agenda next month?
Yes.
Yeah, it doesn't spend money, so I just want to make sure everybody's okay with that.
I think we're pretty good.
Okay.
All right, let's go to Quest Food, contract extension.
Similar, we went out to bid twenty sixteen, Kristen, you want to provide some background?
Uh, correct, this contract is also a revenue generator for the district, so we don't spend any money on Quest Foods, we receive a commission based off of the food sales, as well as, uh, the food sales of the three satellite schools, uh, that use Quest as well. We are certainly happy with the quality of service, and would like to extend their contract, um, also, you know, I think it's important to note, last time we went out to bid, there's only one other, uh, company that submitted a bid, um, and they weren't a very viable option, they had one large high school, uh, contract, uh, and at the time, they were in a lawsuit with that company, or with that, um, with that school, so, uh, we're very pleased with Quest, we've received approximately eighty thousand dollars in revenue each year, um, due to our three satellites as well, that varies based off of, uh, cost. Uh, legal counsel has reviewed this, uh, as well, and this is the final version of the contract.
Did we win a cafeteria award, did I see that?
Yeah, yes, that was, um, a few years back, but.
Yes, how about that proposal, man, they put everything in there, including the kitchen sink, I was like, more pages, more color pictures, wow, wow.
I know, the name was very odd.
Yes, it was extremely, I thought so.
Very complex.
Airmark doesn't submit?
Food service.
For food service, interesting.
So what I would say is, unless we receive questions, uh, on this, I will also put this on the consent agenda if the board's okay.
But is this money?
Uh, well, it's just like the last one. Just the last one we approved, that we're gonna put.
But if you submit, we can submit questions, and we can pull it off, if we, if you read through this, you know.
But by proving this, it's, it's a money one, don't we have to do the individual roll call for this one? No.
You can, you can have anything on the next meeting, on the, on the consent agenda, that's why I just asked the la, that same question on the last one, because it's money for the auditor, that we're paying for an auditor. We used to pay bills on the consent.
Boy, no, but I had asked for one to be on the consent for next month, and you said we can't, because it has to do with money. I had asked, um.
The textbooks, I, because it was sixty thousand, Kylie's got to recommit and explain the thing, I would not put it on a consent, because we, we took it off, because there's been a textbook change.
Is there questions?
Oh, because there's questions.
And it's a large, it's a large amount of money, I thought we would want to discuss that.
Right, but if we have a question on this, we can, next month, we could pull it, you say, let's reevaluate this, we'll pull it off and put it on a separate phone.
Okay.
But if no questions are submitted, then we put it on the consent, and then hopefully not go through the regular call. Oh, yeah, I know, right, you're looking, you're like, my name's for closed session.
Wes, sir, can I just go back to the.
Absolutely.
Interesting, has anybody in the school heard about the third shift of the lunch not having, uh, the same choice as the prior two?
Yes, and we've been working with, uh, Tony is, uh, the manager here, we've been working with him, um, and in the last, uh, probably two weeks, he's increased the amount of food that they, uh, are producing for, for C, and they continue to monitor that.
Okay, that's great.
And I wanted to add, um, that I have met with Tony and the students every other month, kind of, uh, of.
kind of a food committee, and I've heard that concern, and we are addressing that.
Okay, thank you.
Did I tell you like they want different foods?
Yeah, they want ribeyes. Different options, you know, you know, more, more foods in the, in the third lunch, you know. So we make sure, make sure I connect the student with Tony or manager and myself, so we can plan to try to meet their needs.
Okay, so if you have questions, submit them, if not, we'll put it on the consent.
Okay. So matters for closed, personnel, student discipline, individual, student matters, sale or lease of property, pending intimate litigation, collective negotiations, school safety. It's another chance for visitor statements. Nobody's here, so just move right on. Discussion items requested, do we have any requested?
Nope. We didn't.
Consideration for future items of future meetings? All right.
Nope.
I think Gina will kill you, you know, motion. A motion for closed.
I got it. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second.
There you go.
Need a roll call?
Mr. Treska?
Yes.
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 Yes.